Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone. Swan County Board and County Commissioners Meeting of October 20th, 2020 at 6:00 P.M. At this time, I've asked Commissioner Fleming to do our invocation and pledge. If everyone will please stand.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Once again, I'd just like to welcome everyone this evening. We've got the whole house, and it's just good to see the folks coming out to be part of the county's work. Our first item of business this evening is our approval of amendments from our October 6th regular board meeting, October 6th utility board meeting, and our October 13th special call meeting. Do I have any questions, comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Hamel, second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving right along to the consent agenda. I have item two through seven. Do I have any questions or comments, or do I have a motion to approve? Got a motion by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Hamel. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. (Inaudible) We have a public hearing that is timed sensitive of 6:05 P.M. We have a couple of minutes in between times, so we're going to move ahead to our agenda item number 11. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Hale. His work, this board works hard and works well together, but Commissioner Hale has had something dear and dear to his heart. And since I've been on the board, he's been working on it before that, but since I've just, he's kept me up to speed. It's what has happened, and it's just amazing what it's put together and how hard it's worked. I'm just really glad that all of these folks from the counties and the citizens is here tonight to be able to see what's happening. But I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Hale, and I'll let him introduce these folks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like our chairman said, this board does work well together. We work hard for the people of Swan County, but we couldn't do it without our friends Senator Bradley, Chuck Brandon, our housework team. They worked, and I'm honored to have you guys here tonight, and thankful for you guys. You guys worked just as hard as we did to make this happen, but I thought they did. I'd just like to introduce both of you guys. Come up, say hello to us.
I think they have a small check they want to present.
I see something there.
Y'all want to do the picture with the check, or?
We can do it if you want to say a couple words versus.
And I didn't say what it was, but I hope the folks in Swan County know that. I'll let Chuck tell us.
First of all, thank you for having us over here. I've been live with the lot last couple of weeks. We both realized that Mr. Wayne Wright's married the other night, and then livestock show the other night, and Trump rally. So here we are again, but I tell folks often times, I had pretty deep roots over here. My daddy lived from here, my momma grew in White Springs, my granddaddy, my momma, all of them get up here. And I thought I knew a lot of people, but I surely haven't met the last 23 months of life. And all of y'all were all on the first name basis, Ron, Randy, Mr. Fleming, Lynn, Don, Ricky, all of y'all. Just good friends to us. And what we're here to do tonight is what it's all about, is working together, is successful. I think our senator might have to remind me, last year, we got some money for the rodeo ring out back. And when I was up here the other night at the livestock show, I didn't even know it was named after Bob Holmes. Mr. Bob was my granddaddy's first cousin, and I didn't know that. So as President, say no collusion. No collusion on that. But I was proud of seeing the group there, and of course, a really tough budget year. I'm here just to show you the fake check, and then I'm going to introduce the real man, the big guy, who really is the man behind the real money and the real check. I didn't know, Randy, when did the money, did it come yet, or y'all seen it?
I haven't seen it yet.
Not yet.
All right, well, I don't know nothing about that. That's the real man, right? But last year, we gave a couple of these out. I got dinged on audit the other day. My secretary said, "You can't be handing those checks out." They said, "You got to get one of them dry rates, and just use the same one over." And I said, "That's a bunch of bull. I'm going to paper that thing myself, which y'all hang out on the wall somewhere." But I know how important this is to y'all, of course, I guess it's going into Commissioner Hale's district. I was at Trump rally the other night. President always activates the governor, and Rob was going to talk about. He'll say, "Ah, that Ron just said it's like, Governor, he's calling me all the time. Ah, I tell Ron, I can't get that." And he ain't expecting, Chuck, y'all didn't say it, the governor's doing what he's supposed to do. He's calling residents, trying to get money from Florida. I'm telling Don, it's just like that. He's calling, saying, "Chuck, you got to get that fire station where we all..." I'm like, "Senator's helping the guy." One day it's, and he'll explain to you how that works. One day it's the budget, one day it's not the budget. One day it's three quarters of a million, next day it's half a million. And I'll tell you one little funny story, which Senator got down to the last day, and Don had been on a couple of times. Some other, Mr. Ricky and Jimmy Norris had come, and for some reason, it would be on the House side, the Senate side, it's not one side or the other. We got down to half a million dollars, half a million, but you see that. But we wanted, we wanted something that would have been valid, so it got down to that. And I was like, "What can we do?" And I'm like, "Hang on a second." And I see Rob coming across the, between the House and the Senate chamber, and I don't want to talk for a ton of there. So I go grab him, and this is the last day, this man, everybody's tugging at him, pulling him, but I can imagine what he goes through as a state senate preparation's chairman. You know, I tell he's stressed, and I stop him, I say, "Hey, Senator, can we get the Swan Fire Station back up? Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, got to get that, he's like..." You know, I know, he's probably not listening to me and that, but I think, I think he listens, so he leaves. So I called on, I said, "I don't know if I tried the last time, but we'll see what happens." Well, at 4:30 in the morning, my phone goes off. Now, this shows your heart and the Senate works. At 4:30, it was the last day, I get a text, and he's like, "We got it back in there, give me Don," and stuff. Now, I texted him back immediately, he probably thought I wasn't answering until about 7:00. And I was a policeman, so I answered, but I thought, "Oh, no, I used to answer my phone." But I think by about 7:00, I called the Don, and Don said, "Hang up, the Senator's calling me." And I said, "Well, take that call, because we need to thank him." I'll introduce him, he's been a friend, a mentor to me, and I hear coming down the pipe, he's a pretty good replacement for him coming. I don't know the seat, I think we got a pretty good one to take his place, might even be better than him. But it's been a great honor to work with Rob. He was always true to be good. He is a friend of Swan County, Baker County, and he got a fire station over there last year. Got this, we all got, not two months, got six point two million dollars from college, but it's still building. Three quarters of a million dollars for hard of hearing, deaf children, rural and underserved areas like Swan, and so many, and so many. All these good words, but we're going to miss him. He's your friend, he's my friend, he's your state senator. Let's introduce him, tell you what he's about, just, just, just the hero.
Thank you, Rob. Y'all might want to cash this pretty quick, because with COVID, the money's gone. The revenues are going down. I'm kidding, the money's good for you. We'll get the details, Randy, on when this comes specifically, but it'll be this time of year, or this fiscal year, for sure. Chairman, Commissioners, Don in particular, I know how important this project is to you. I really have been honored to be able to work with all of you over the years. You've had a good run. I'm done now, and it's been, it's been great. It's just such a privilege to be able to work with the people of Swan County, so thank you for granting me that privilege. It's really been quite an honor. This has been a very difficult year for all of us. Look at us, we're in the middle of a gymnasium, I mean, we're in a few shirts and things to play, basketball. But that, it's just, the weirdness of 2020 has been crazy, but what I think it has meant for us anyway, Bradley family, is it really got us back to the basics of what's important. And you know, when it comes to the government, the fundamental thing we do is make sure when somebody, if there's fire, if someone's having a heart attack, making sure that we're there, make sure our first responders are there, our police are there, our EMT and firemen, and women, and those men and women, really are the core of what we do as government, public safety. And hopefully, this will, this will help, make sure that the people in Swan County are better served, are served well now, are even better served. And we just, yeah, thinking about what is important. Thank you to men and women who protect us and keep us safe. We really do appreciate you. And with that, my good friend Chuck Brandon, he's being all modest and all that stuff. Y'all got a heck of a, a hell of a representation here. Chuck Brandon, he got fights, tooth and nail, all the times, being real nice to me, because I'm on the way out. But you've had a good run here, and thank you for everything you've done for me, Chuck, as well. Thank you for what you do for the people of Swan County. I hope that this is, will be a blessing for the men and women who work here. May God bless them and keep them safe. So thank you very much.
Thank you. This is the last hour of the meeting, but you know, we lay out at the end of March, so that's like playing a football game. The money's on the, we went 99 yards, and money's sitting on the goal line. But then we got the fire skits, and what was a billion dollars got put out of this, that's a billion feet now. And we're trying to save our most important projects, and this one is always at the top. So we're always in contact, and lifting up is also, so we appreciate him, that he spared this project, and his permission. We look forward to coming back, and y'all break ground, and get rid of it all.
I know I said it, but I'm going to say it, I just can't thank these two guys enough, and this board for supporting this. It's actually not going in my district, but it's going in the parts where the county needs it the most, and that's why it's important.
Who's district, exactly? It's Lynn. I appreciate it, I appreciate it, I'm hard for him. Well, I would tell the legislators, when you try to politic a little bit, they all know about the busy man you're running back for. I said, "If this beat case is on fire, we got to have a fire station, boy, you need to stop it, we got to..." (Laughter) Let's get a picture.
Okay.
Chairman, can I say something real quick before I get ready? Yes. Senator Bradley, and Representative Brandon, I just want to, on behalf of the members on the side of our residents, like you guys, that we appreciate how hard you've fought for us to get this. It's been a very hard time. We've never had a station for our voters, and this is a very, very happy. I also want to thank Commissioner Hale and the rest of the board members. It's been phenomenal the last several years, the support that we get from you guys, and because of how hard you guys fight, these guys are willing to fight for us as well. And, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys do how much we appreciate this, so thank you very much. (Applause) (Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Can I say one more thing? I looked on the football schedule, I seen that Swan plays Baker on Friday after election, every Tuesday. So y'all come on over, plenty, we'll, I know we didn't know y'all, all y'all big football fans. Baker County was five and oh until last week. Then Bowles come to town, put us in our place, and that was like five. Y'all come on over.
If we beat you, you know.
Play a good game. You what?
If we beat you, you know that against us.
Yeah. So, we don't have a lot of good news, but it's a good year for us. We look forward to welcoming y'all to our county council.
Thank you so much. Senator Bradley, I just want to say thank you so much from this board. I know you're, to answer your questions about Senator Bradley, he's fought hard for us, and he's turning out, so he's, he stayed there as long as he could, but we sure appreciate you and everything you do for Swan County and this state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all take care. Good job.
I appreciate everybody being patient, we're just here to take care of that, and so we're looking forward to it, grateful. At this time, we do have some serious business to take care of. We have a time specific. Item number eight, at 6:05 P.M. or as soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider adoption, resolution, approving, special permit request number S.P.-20-10-01 by Quinn Sewell Farm LLC, authorized agent for Quinn Enterprises LLC to be granted a special permit under section 4.4.5 B12 of the Swan County Land Development Regulations for Utilities and Related Factors. Mr. Meeks. Before we start, let me, at this time, we'll open the public hearing, and anyone that thinks they may want to speak, it doesn't matter if you speak or not, but you'll be sworn in. So basically, the county attorney will ask you to raise your hand at this time, so anyone in the audience.
Each of you will stand, please, and raise your hand. If you just think you may testify. Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony given before the board this evening will be the truth to help you guide. Thank you. Now, as you do approach to speak, please state your name and address clearly in the microphone or over. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, welcome Mr. Ron Meeks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. The application that you have before you denied is a special permit number S.P.-20-10-01. Location for this proposed site is in sections 21 and 16, downship four south, range 14 east, Swan County, Florida. Generally located north and east of 180th Street, which a lot of you know is the Blacktop Road and 89th Road. The size of the site is 559.54 acres, old property that is owned by Quinn Enterprises LLC. The intent is to construct a 74.9 megawatt solar site with an interconnection to be just a little bit west of this site on the Duke Energy Transmission Lines. Property is currently zoned agricultural one, no flood zones on the site. In your packet, from your information, we have a proposed resolution for approval. It's what we always write it up, with some certain conditions that the board had previously approved on a, another solar site that was located in the county. You will also notate on the site plan, and the site plan indicates a proposed seven-foot tall fence rather than the six-foot fence with barbed wire. It would be additional foot, seven-foot fence, and exclude the barbed wire. In attachment B of the proposed resolution, the first condition that we have there is that the applicant's security bench have been placed along the rear of the required setback that would put the seven-foot fence on the innermost portion of the landscape buffer that would be around the perimeter. Second condition there would be, following completion of construction, the applicant will plant shrubs and trees between the adjoining roads, adjoining property and solar farm outside of the applicant's security fence, together with existing trees and vegetation around the perimeter of the property, the newly planted trees and shrubs, create a visual screen to buffer around the solar farm, and transition between road, rocks, and way, and adjoining property of the solar farm. The area shall be so designed and planted and maintained as to be 80% or more opaque between two and six feet above the average ground level when viewed horizontally. This requirement shall be accomplished within 30 months of construction completion. Any shrub or trees and vegetative screen which shall die shall be removed, and new shrub or trees as appropriate will be planted. Do you have representatives from the companies proposing construction of the solar site present to answer questions and show the reasons they are there? Site plan is informed. If you don't have any questions, it's me, and this time I'll put the, enter the files.
Do we have any questions from Mr. Meeks at this time? C and A.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of comments to make, so right off the bat. The addendum that Mr. Meeks referred to was one that had been done in a previous matter, and we have gone past that point now, when we were directed to be, come up with the addition of the other conditions that we have that can, that would be more standardized throughout the county for all of the solar facilities that would be desiring, desiring to come into the county. I have presented you all each with an exhibit number. It just says number eight at the top because it refers to agenda item number eight, and I noticed that it has 21 items on what I sent you in four pages, but it's supposed to have a 22nd item on the fifth page, which is not appearing. But it is typical, following along with the conditions that you had before, we expanded, you know, all of those conditions. When he's talking about a seven-foot fence, we require an eight-foot fence. The National Electric Code does say only a seven-foot fence, but we had included it in there. With the opacity, we went from having an opacity up to six feet to having a, having a timeline within there, within the plantings would reach a certain height by certain deadlines, so that the plantings would be, reach the opacity that's required. And as we move all the way through, the other things are pretty typical, as I have discussed with the representatives before, pretty typical for solar facilities, so it's not anything that they're not accustomed to, but the 22nd one that appears on, that does not appear on the list, that's on the missing page, is a decommissioning bond. We had discussed that they, before construction would take place, that we would have an engineer make an estimate of what decommissioning costs would be. They would make that estimate. And then we, the county would have a bond placed up for the life of the facility, for the decommissioning costs, in case something happened, and they walked away and left everything there. The bond would then cover all of those costs. In addition, because the life of this facility is anywhere from 20 to 35 years, we would have bond reviewable every five years, so that that number in the bond would, you know, would match up with what those actual decommissioning costs, you know, may be. So I know Mr. Meeks referred to that particular set of it as part of the addendum, but that was one previous. So I just wanted to bring you back current to remind you about these. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Bradley, thank you. At this time.
No, sir, not from me, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Please come forward, sir. I'd like to welcome you this evening, just please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Hal Galvin, representing Renesola Power Holdings. I'm from Minneapolis, Minnesota. Have trouble understating my accent, just ask me to speak a little more slowly, and I'll try. Anyway, I represent Renesola. This project on Quinn's property is being co-developed by Renesola and Renegedica. Justin is representing Renegedica. So our partnership really revolves around two basic functions, us handling a lot of planning and development, Renegedica handling a lot of the permitting package and engineering issues. Do you wish to write that over there? Better? Yeah, sorry. I think the project is running pretty well, I just wanted to introduce myself. I came into this meeting from Minnesota, because it's our philosophy of developing solar that did not show up for permanent, permanent meetings, to be presumptuous and not respect the community that we're trying to build in. I wanted to say that here are the needs, here are your concerns, I'll accommodate as best we can, and hopefully, handle for the facility that serves the community as well as, you know, the operator of this facility. So I'll sit down, unless you have any specific questions.
Do I have any questions from Mr. Galvin for this time? Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hey, good evening. Justin, 3016, Chelsea Street, Central Florida, Orlando, Disney World. I'll keep it pretty brief, but I figured it'd be helpful for context, because y'all already have a project operating out here. You'll probably see more throughout this region. A lot of folks don't know, but the cost of electricity from utility-scale solar has dropped close to 89% over the past decade. So we're seeing the manufacturing capacity across the globe increase pretty substantially, and just the expertise that constructing these projects has gone through a lot of innovation, a lot of cost declines, and so we can build utility-scale solar projects of this size cheaper than natural gas plants, coal plants, nuclear plants. So that's why you're seeing a project like this come forward. I think it's worth mentioning, there's a lot of things that kind of go into the development of a project like this, and the cost of, what does it cost to connect to the grid? What does it cost to build? What does it cost to operate electricity in the area? Local planning zoning requirements, are they going to improve it? What are the requirements to have that bond? There's a lot that goes into it, and you guys play a really important role, so we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. We made a couple important considerations to the site plan based on your kind of feedback that we received during the application process. And so we made sure to keep the inverters at least 300 feet from any property lines, so, you know, solar panels create DC electricity, the grid operates in ACC, you got to invert the electricity. Those inverters do create noise during the day, so when it's generating electricity, you hear the fans and some of the electronics moving, and so that generates noise. But just like if you were in town, walking by a transformer, and you kept walking, that sound would dissipate with distance, that's what happens. So all you got to do is just place those in the interior of your site, and so we made sure to do that. We contemplated for, you know, pretty substantial setbacks, about 100 feet between the fence and the property line. So just try to give people breathing room as it relates to the project, landscape buffering requirements, how to comply with those, that's pretty standard. Generally, solar is a pretty compatible use with rural agricultural land use classifications, you know. Other than the inverters, there's really not much noise. Once it's built, there's not a lot of daily traffic, maybe you have one truck coming in and out each day to do some O and M, or operation maintenance on the site. Don't create any, any emission, pollution, you know, 95-plus percent of the land remains permeable, so you're not completely paving and rattling the entire area. You're driving steel posts into the ground, so you use a pile driver. I see this gentleman with some Moss gear on, and that's one of the largest solar companies in the nation, based here in Florida, in Florida, their headquarters down in Fort Lauderdale, I believe. So it's a pretty, pretty growing workforce, actually, the third fastest-growing career according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. Kind of a multiple, but a pretty substantial, fast-growing industry, a lot of good job opportunities, a lot of folks who want to get in the industry, you don't even need a college degree. Over 50% of the workforce just has a GED or high school degree, so it's a great, great industry. great, great industry to look forward to, so, you know. I got into ten years ago installing solar in homes for the top paper college, and, you know, I've been in that ever since, happy to answer any technical questions, but really all, all the information on the project, I think you all have at hand, so just let us know if you have any questions.
Do you all have any questions for the gentleman at this time? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. At this, at this time, we're going to open the floor to public comment. I want to make sure if you have anything that you would like for us to hear, that you have the opportunity to be heard, so, uh... If you please state your name and address for the record, and pull the microphone down, it's kind of, it's kind of hard to hear in here. Thank you so much.
Yes, my name is Charles Beeston, seventeen-seventeen on East Davis Street, by Woburn. I can say I've got a work for Moss Solar, and he is a good company to work for, and if anybody needs a job here, no matter, like I said, high school, diploma, GED, take care, if y'all can get a private DM on, uh, Hobart Road, I quite shoot y'all ever successful and satisfied with how we're doing. I hate every last moment comes to myself, satisfied, recruiting. I hope trade y'all a little movement, get the job done.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your comments. Just your name and address for the record.
My name is Sarah Friedman. I live on one, oh, eight, one-eight-oh, zero, five-one-two, eight-nine, twelve, in Alton. My land wraps around and it funds under the area, right across from this projected project. And first I'd like to say, I'm really sad that this land is not for agricultural, but I also understand we're in hard times, that farming is a problem. What I appreciate is the Quinn family looking for alternative to use this land and keep it in production. Easy path would have been for them to put up for sale, having subdivisions, man. The land, I mean, they're totally out of production. It would have been a strain on our coes resources. And all the, it would make my taxes go up, and I have agricultural land, and I want to keep it agricultural, my daughter and my grandson. So this impacts me directly. I'm also talking for my daughter, whose house is a hundred-and-eighty street, right across from me. She can't be here today because she has a two-year-old, but she has contacted Mr. Richardson and let him know that she's in favor of this project. I know that there's a lot that happens that a lot of the public doesn't know about, but this project is offering our county something so positive that we need to take this opportunity, we need to grab it. It is an asset, and the county needs all the assets in America. It's our future, it's like Rinsom's future. All of you families and their children, please, I'm asking you, two families and a lot of other people, to consider this project and vote yes for our future. It's important, please. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Could I, could I get your hands up, how many folks in the audience is a favorite of this project tonight? Thank you. Do I have anyone else wishing to speak from the public at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, and at this time we'll have more discussion on the project. I will, uh, I'll say a couple things first, and then I'd like to have you gentlemen express your feelings. I see a lot of farming folks here tonight that sense support of this project, and just like most of those, I've lived around in my life, and that means a lot to me. The one thing I like about this project, and this is where it gets difficult, because we will have a project presented, presented to us that the folks did spend their time and do their preparation before they got here. Tonight, all the information that I've had presented, that I've researched, and saw, and the changes made along the way, these folks has done everything I believe that the county has asked and had the summers about, and has went above and beyond, and, uh, we'll continue to have discussion on it, but I like where the site's located, I like setbacks, and I think it's a good fit moving this bond further forward, so I'm in support of it. Gentlemen, let me hear your thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, we've had this coming forward before, sometimes we're a good fit and sometimes we're not, uh, doing research on business. I believe it's an excellent fit if you want to count and allow the board to support.
Thank you. Commissioner Gammel.
Chairman, uh, I have maybe some supported, uh, previously, but I did go out and took a look at this investigation itself, and saw why they, they feel for the community. What I like is, the only thing to say is they feel the benefit of it. We can, uh, be eight, nine, and they're going to be happening for this community, for this county, so we need to afford to do something that, you know, provide that, so I'm for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleming, any thoughts?
Uh, I think the boards are aware of my thoughts on matters. I've been very supportive of solar regardless, and, uh, I, I believe that this is a really good project out of Quinn, and they're good people, and I believe that, uh, that their commitment to Swan County shows in their desire to turn their land, keep their land and turn it into something that's useful for them to have a company. And, uh, the community around the, uh, the particular piece of property has, has been very supportive of this measure. I've gotten phone calls from the folks and, and from, uh, folks in the area, and they've been very supportive, I haven't heard anything negative about it, so, um, I'm absolutely against supportive of this measure, and I hope that, uh, the, uh, once this is supported, and once this is approved, uh, that the solar company can get something done with, uh, new energy and get something in place, it'd be nice to have one of these solar projects working.
Thank you, Commissioner Richard.
Commissioner Hare, any thoughts?
Uh, well, Mr. Chairman, like you said, some of these things have come before, and some make sense and some do not, uh, and that's a decision we have to make on the board. Sometimes those decisions are not always the way someone wants them to go. Uh, but that being said, I agree with everyone here this evening, I've, I've actually seen the property. This is a good fit, and I think it's going to be a good project.
Thank you, Commissioner Hare.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
For, uh, Justin, thank you for probably explaining this, just make sure that I've got this. Uh, under your drawing, you said that every converter is a piece right up from the property line, and, um, and I realize this is probably more of a grid than anything else, but I just want to make sure, because there, from what I can see of your explanation on the inverters, the one on the southwest corner, uh, closest to the twenty-eighth track, folks that live there on the corner, is that an converter right there on the edge? Is that little box in the support, is that just?
Yeah, generally we just use kind of a grid laid out there, but it's not a permanent location.
But if it could be moved, it would be moved if you replace this at least a bit more.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. You can, you can put that as a condition to prove, if you want to just be extra careful. Well, I'm comfortable with that.
I'll try to go back there.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll just get right to business. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution as written?
No, sir. Remember, we're changing. The format of the resolution is going to include in the, instead of the proposed addendum, uh, that Mr. Meeks had, the old one, we're going to put the new one in instead, which would include the, the twenty-five up, twenty...
Twenty-two, I think.
Twenty-two items, uh, in five pages, uh, for the, for the addendum.
Do I have a motion to approve, to adopt this resolution as outlined by Mr. Prabhat? Got a motion by Commissioner Gammel, second by Commissioner Fleming, all of them favor say aye. Aye, all of them say the same side. Motion carries five over. At this time, we'll close public hearing, and at this time also we'll take a five-minute recess.
I'm not following. Chairman.
Everyone back at this time. Moving on to item number nine, discuss the possible board action, final plat approval of Kingswood Estates subdivision. Mr. Long Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members, this is, uh, final plat approval for Kingswood Estates subdivision. It's a twenty-point-zero-four acre parcel containing four five-point-zero-one acre lots. Uh, the access for the lots would be off of, uh, one-hundred-and-eighty-fifth Road, which is the county paint road. Uh, the board approved preliminary plat, uh, in June of this year. Um, so we have plat that's been reviewed by another surveyor, lots are checked, ones have the seven, that's just, so it's just back to a fourth final approval, and, uh, Logan has copied mine, requiring chair and signature, partners.
So at this time, all we need is an informal motion.
Uh, no, sir.
We need a, a, a...
No, sir, I have some questions.
You're being difficult tonight.
I've got just one of those nights.
You can tell this.
Yeah, yeah. All of a sudden, I think you need to turn the auction down a little bit.
That'll be generally the way that we have to go through. Okay, Mr. Meeks, under, uh, the subdivision regulations, especially the final plat review, number seven talks about, uh, looking at adjoining owners on the property. I notice on the plat that, uh, around this property, it says that the adjoining, adjoining owner is Greystone, uh, Land Company. Are you sure about that? Well, I'm sure they're not. Let me put it that way. Okay. Well, so that is incorrect on the plat, so that's number one reason why we can't approve this by tonight. The second, uh, reason is that, um, when you look at item number twenty-one, this is required for the, you're supposed to have a title opinion from the attorney with regard to the title that's on this property. A title letter that we received is dated September second, two thousand and twenty, from Ms. Brandon L. Strickland, an attorney-at-law that works also as an abstractor for an abstract trust title LLC. Well, on September second, she advises that she has looked at the plat that you see before you, uh, which actually wasn't prepared until October eighth, and it was done by Mr. Timothy Alcorn, certificate number seventy-one-seventy. Well, Mr. Alcorn's certificate number is not seventy-one-seventy, it's actually sixty-three-thirty-two. Um, and therefore, the most egregious thing is when you get into the next paragraph, she's reviewed this title from September twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety, to September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, and it's only September second, so, I mean, some lawyers are good, but I don't see that they can see that well into the future, you know, at the time. So, again, item number twenty-one and the plat thing is not complied with, so I recommend that you not, uh, review it. Further, further as you move on, the certificate and, uh, under, uh, section five-point-four-oh-point-two requires a certificate of taxes to be signed by the, um, tax assessor, that, the tax collector, that there are not any taxes due that are on the property, and the plat does not contain any, uh, such certificate. Finally, the certificate of surveyor that's on here, uh, does not comply, uh, with the addendum A that is required on the ODRs, and Mr. Alcorn dated the survey on the twenty-first of May, so he needs to change his certificate, uh, as well. So at this point, I have one last question, and this is to Mr. Meeks. Mr. Meeks, because it's next to an existing county road, did you have an opportunity to go out there and look at one-hundred-and-eighty-fifth street and, and determine whether or not the travel lanes on it are ten feet wide or wider?
I didn't measure the road, I traveled, it was pretty awful, but I could have measured it.
Okay, it's required to have a, a level steep road, you know, in front of it for this type of subdivision, and it's got to be ten-foot travel lanes, so, uh, next time you travel, how about pull it down a tape, and we'll be able to talk about it the next time we're here. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Prabhat?
No, sir, that should do it for me.
I missed the first slide.
Thank you, sir. Moving ahead, so we will have those directions, and they will come back to the board. That sums up.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We have already done our additional agenda item, so at this time, I will open the floor to the public, if anyone wishes to speak, please make your way to the microphone. Seeing none, I'll close public comment at this time. Mr. Harris, do you have any comments this evening? Thank you. At this time, I have closed comments from the board. Commissioner Richardson, start us off.
Well, I, uh, want to say I appreciate the, uh, visit of the truck training, uh, over to Public Network, that you had a chance to, let's get your face in the way. I'm live from Washington. I think everybody knows, but, uh, Pat Gates, it was good, uh, missed the, uh, public truck trailer on this weekend, so it's kind of good to get back there. But having said that, I'll, uh, you may report, because it's political, but, uh, I would like to say thank you, the board, for, uh, getting behind this solar project. Uh, I will thank the community for coming out and in force to support this project. I wish we had more, uh, last time, if we could have had a little bit different turnout, but, uh, um, it looks like it's a, it's a good project, and I hope, uh, that New Kids is, uh, seasoned and safe. Uh, other than that, uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything else.
Thank you so much, sir. Commissioner Prabhat.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have much to say tonight, I just glad to be here. Um, I do have a announcement from, uh, the Sheriff's Department. Uh, there's going to be a fundraiser in Douglas and on Ninth Street, Bible Corner, Thursday, October twenty-second, time at eleven AM to one PM, the concert, seven dollars, menu with pork sandwich, chips, dessert. Says, please call Teresa three-eight-six, Teresa four, thirty-four eighteen, place a order to go, will deliver five meals or more, and the bills are provided by Sheriff's Act at that time. Uh, it's getting always about to get something, but, uh, I was glad that, uh, the things you could rep and hit today and here and on. I do have a number to give a call, but, uh, I'm surprised, the board, Chairman, Commissioner, uh, Senator, Commissioner, probably crazy.
Mr. Meeks.
Yeah, specifically, yeah, anyway, Commissioner Richardson, thank you for your time, and there, there's gonna be another time, I have some, but, uh, it's one thing about, uh, a good attorney, and I have to give it to our, uh, back, the back. I watch on the block, and he said a couple two times tonight, and those two times are good times to keep us out of the crack. Every time I went to those, uh, work blocks, those attorneys, they, they said, things that they say, you got a good attorney, they'll have you back. And, uh, I can most certainly say that if you had our back, we'll wait for one, the thing that we probably could have got off just a little bit, but I appreciate your, uh, your education, uh, on your...
But I appreciate your, uh, your education, your part on your job, that you're doing the job very well. Appreciate that. You know, we're the same age, I think. You may have it about three months, but we're in that same realm somewhere. So your expertise, your, your level of learning have carried you about, you know, a long way. I most, I appreciate you being our new attorney and I support you to the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Gamble.
I've just got one thing. I don't know if this will put a brand on the spot or CRA on the spot, but what is it, aisle line or parking lot uptown? I'm ready for that thing to be complete.
I think, uh, perhaps Gabrielle can answer that question for you.
I know a company earlier, you said, that has been delayed for several days. Uh, I'm still getting around to talking about aisle line. I'm getting a lot of requests about that on a daily basis, you know, especially since I feel where it's going to happen and looking at proper creatures office about every day.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Gamble, Gabrielle Redfern for the CRA of the City of Vado. It's a pleasure to appear before you tonight to give you an update on watershed park and parking improvements. Uh, just last week, we were able to coordinate with FPNL, the renewal of the pole and the light that was on Swan Avenue that was in the way of our trenching for the new lighting equipment. We have received, um, nine of the eleven light poles, which means we've received nine of the eleven bolts that we need to install the bases. Starting next week, we will be continuing with the project full force. We have a plan on Monday to start, um, excavating for the conduit as well as pouring the bases and running the conduit around to many of the bases that we can install at this time. We will, however, install the conduit to the complete project. We hope to have that part of the project finished by the end of that week. What that will do is that will give us a month of November and we have asked our service contractor to look at staging his work for the entire month of November to get us to Christmas on the square. We have had to issue a change order to our contract to our service contractor to prohibit work for the first week of December to accommodate Christmas on the square. Um, this is a change order that, um, nobody really wanted to do because it would require mobilization and demobilization and then re-mobilization and de-mobilization. We are hoping that the contractor will be able to complete all of the surface work in the month of November. If for some reason the service contractor does not feel like he can complete that work, it's my understanding that he will inform us during the first week of November and not start the work, at which time we will clean the parking lot, we will sweeten the parking lot and we will make it available to parking as well as Christmas on the square. And then the week after Christmas on the square, we will continue with our work. So we have a Plan A, which is the best case scenario, and a Plan B, which is not so. Uh, we are also waiting for the delivery of the two additional lights. Um, and the other complication due to COVID and, um, production delays is that even if we are able to install the nine bases and the nine light poles that we have in stock, we do not have delivery of the luminaires and globes. And so those lights probably will not be active for Christmas on the square. However, we have been able to install the ten power pedestals, um, that surround the, uh, retention pond, and so that auxiliary power source will be available for Christmas on the square. Should we not complete this project before Christmas on the square, we will do our utmost to make sure that the parking lot is clear and clean and able to accommodate Christmas on the square. Um, we also at that time will probably not have the landscaping installed, but we will clean the area as best as possible and decorate it for Christmas on the square. So I appreciate the patience of the board and the employees that work around, um, our parking lot. It has been very disappointing for all of us. Uh, COVID has put delays on this project from not only the delivery of our essential products, but we also had a great deal of illness within our core. And the other complicating factor, as you know, was the change in responsibilities in the city and our public works department. Um, we went from having a private contractor to bringing a lot of that work in-house. So those three complicating factors have delayed this project to, um, positions that none of us anticipated and we do apologize, but at the end of the day, it's going to be a really great project for the city, for the county, for, uh, continuing use as a festival space. It's also, as I've mentioned before, a resiliency point for us because of the extra power that we're putting in and the ability to backfeed it through generators. Should we have any sort of natural disaster where much of our populace is without power, we'll be able to provide auxiliary power sources for our residents in that space as well as set up, um, full power to leave the trailers or the sheriff's department to aid in our power. So, um, I apologize and thank everybody for their forbearance and, um, look forward to completing the project as soon as possible. Thank you again, Commissioner Gamble, for the opportunity to address all of those issues.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Richardson. Commissioner Harris, closing comments.
I don't have anything else. I was going to mention at the last meeting, but I forgot too, that, uh, I think Gamble was there, uh, the sheriff was there and some of our firefighters were there for the Hoodbone Heroes fishing trip a few weeks ago. Again, it was a big success. Just want to thank everyone involved and, uh, every time I do this, is you meet a new veteran and there's, their stories are just amazing. It's truly inspiring, so I just wanted to mention that, but that's all. And, and I do want to thank everyone on the board that helped get this for Swan County. Uh, it's not a district one thing or a district four thing, it's a Swan County thing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
I wasn't going to comment, but since you raised the issue of the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars allocation to the state, I'll go ahead and mention this. Um, I do not anticipate receiving a check as such. In fact, we have an agreement with the agency, with the state, that actually is going to administer these funds. What I do anticipate is it'll be a reimbursement type thing, just like we have with all our other, uh, state allocations and grants. We'll follow very much the same type of scenario. We'll pay it and then we'll reimburse.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Anything else, Mr. Chairman? Thank you. I'll jump in real quick. I will, uh, make mention of the county council, CRA, all the other folks that stepped in to help out. Saturday, October thirty-first, Heritage Park and Gardens, going to be a drive-through experience this year, so a little different, but everything else has been different. So thank you for y'all and all your effort you put into this, making something happen for the kids. We really appreciate that. Also, I'd like to say, uh, this homecoming week this week, a lot of folks have come back to town, uh, one time a year, get some clothes. Uh, just look forward to that and also hope that things for a football team and, uh, just have them safely for all the kids. It's kind of special to be in school, to be able to do different things every day, have different activities. So just grateful to be a part of that and experience what's going on there. The last thing I'll say tonight is just a little bit of sad news that, uh, I want to keep the Peppers family in our prayers. Uh, Ms. Peppers, she's, she's had hand on so many kids in this community my whole life. I mean, she's been in the daycare business and she's shaped and molded, grown people now, that was a little forty years ago. She passed away early this morning. I'd just like for our, our county employees to be thoughtful of that and just kind of see how close it touches the homeless, Dennis Nix and their worship of the county, it's his mother-in-law. So, uh, it kind of touched upon our, I'd just like everyone to, uh, keep them in our prayers as we move forward. It's a tough situation, but, um, it's, it's, uh, we're definitely thinking about it and praying for it. That being said, all I need is a question to, in pajamas, everybody. Our question by the commissioner. Aye. Set by the commissioner. Uh, Gamble, all the players say aye. Aye. All of us say aye. Thank you.